This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Television.
Are we in the way?
Are we in the way?
No.
Not at all. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to those viewing on Channel 191 on Charter. Today is August 9, 2023, and I'll officially open the Town of Southampton Planning Board meeting. I have two absentees tonight, Stephen Johnson and Mark Darnold, and we do have a quorum for the meeting. However, our first, I'm going to take out of order on the agenda, the public hearing for Berkshire County Area for Rechartered Children for a Common Driveway and Stormwater Permit at 120 East Street, MAP 29, Lot 55 and 55B. I had a late notice this afternoon from one of our board members that had a medical emergency and could not attend tonight. And that being the case, we need four voting members in order to approve a special permit for the common driveway. We do not need it for the stormwater permit, but seeing as it's all tied together in the same application, the applicants requested that it all be heard at one meeting. So it makes sense to me time-wise for them because they were going to have to come back for a second meeting anyway. So this afternoon, I did contact them and told them that we were not going to have a quorum to hear this. And I received this communication this afternoon from them, which I'll read, from Levecq &amp; Associates in Westfield, Massachusetts regarding the proposed common driveway and five-bedroom residential building for 120 East Street, Southampton. Dear Chairman, Deacon, and Board Members, on behalf of the applicant, Berkshire County A R C, Care of Mary Ann Hyatt, our office is here in requesting that the Town of Southampton Planning Board continue the public hearing scheduled for this evening, Wednesday, August 9. On behalf of the applicant, it is being requested that this public hearing be continued to the planning board's next available meeting agenda. Sincerely, Alexander Chiketti from our Levecq &amp; Associates. So given that, we will not hear anything on that project tonight, but we have to set a date for it. And we had no other meetings scheduled for August thus far. However, I could schedule something, and that's up to the board to decide if you want to do that because our next scheduled meeting is not until September 6. However, there's a possibility we could hear it on the 23rd or the 30th, which I could put as a special meeting. So I don't know how the board members feel about that or let it go until September 6.
Mr. Frigl, I'll speak as to his availability.
I'm pretty much available.
Are you around, Dan?
I'm around.
Paul?
So 23rd is one option or?
23rd or the 30th, or we just go on our regular schedule of September 6?
The 23rd works.
And we need one more, right? One more member?
We need one more member, yeah, that's the other thing. Do we tentatively schedule for the 23rd and then?
Well, if I set it here, because a butter notification went out and we have some people here that are interested in this particular case, I'd like to be definitive with it. I could go the 30th and then I would delete our September 6 meeting because it's so close together, you know what I mean? What's your schedule look for, like for the 30th?
I'm open either date, however, my, actually, you know what? I would rather prefer the 30th than the 6th, yes.
All right. Good with that, Dan?
Yep.
I'm sure, I know Stephen's going to be back from vacation and then, and I trust Mark will be available at that point, too. So we will reschedule this hearing for August 30, which is again, two weeks from, or three weeks from now. It's on a Wednesday, same time, 7:00 p.m., and we'll take the business up at that time. You will not receive another notification because the Mass General laws don't stipulate that you have to re-mail everybody and tell them it's continued. It's implied that those showing up this evening are interested parties and those that aren't. So that being the case, you folks know that it'll be on the 30th at 7 o'clock. And I apologize for the inconvenience it may have caused. It's one of those things that happen. We can't predict these things, but in order for the applicant to get a fair shake, too, we've got to have as many, and be quite honest with you, on a special permit, hopefully you would have a full board available for that with five members because it's going to take four, it's going to take two-thirds of the five to pass the special permit. So that's why it's even more important that a full board is here because then the applicant then has a fair shake that a full board is here and they will get the two-thirds out of five rather than two-thirds out of four, which could be a little tight sometimes depending on how controversial it is. So thank you for coming, sorry. But I still think you should get some ice cream on the way home.
How about you pay?
I'll pay, just I've got to put the voucher in. I don't know if I'll get reimbursed.
Are there any lawyers here? Let's be nice.
Thank you.
Thank you and sorry. Okay. Now, Mr. LaCory, we have Gill Farm Estates as the next agenda item, and Mr. LaCory, Attorney LaCory, is seeking to ask a release of Lot Number 3 at Gill Farm Estates over off of Pequot. So state your case, Mr. LaCory.
Yeah, Gary LaCory for Gill Farm Road Estates. Yeah, I'm looking to get a release for Lot 3. We've got that under purchase and sale at the present time. And as you saw the printout, the email from John Furman, we're just about done with most of the work over there. I talked to John Masick from Levecq today, and the monuments and the bounds are in at the, at the street. And the ASBilt is very close, and he's just going to complete a couple of the items. And John Furman himself says that certain things are needed, and there was a little bit of an issue on the trees, but I think we've changed it to the other side of the road, and I think that should be good now. I just drove by the project today, and the grass looks, it's coming up, it looked pretty good over there. And we verified that there's over six inches of topsoil down where needed and everything. There's just some minor issues. There's got to be a marker post that needs to be installed in the sediment for the detention basin. I'd like to know if you, we can get an oak pressure-treated stake in there and maybe painted orange, I don't know, would that work with the, for the, for the planning board?
No, I.
Is it mostly concrete or?
I need to see what the detail calls for as I don't have that in front of me right now.
Okay. But there's, again, some minor things that, one of the catch basins, the fabric ripped, and so we've got to clean that out and take the cover off and put the fabric back. And again, that's, I talked to the contractor, Randy Wilson, it's a minor, relatively minor fix. And.
Painted stop bar at the end of the street?
Yeah, that's, again, that's a, it's a small thing, but that's.
And the final one, contractor should verify that the overflow swale?
Yeah, and he says that's in without question. I talked to Randy Wilson about a half hour ago. So we just got to get this stuff verified by Levecq, and I, we're real close to getting there for subdivision completion, but at the same time, my alternate request is to get this extended, the subdivision completion to July, July of 2024.
Well, then, let's take care of that first before the release because that's putting the cart before the horse there, the other one. So the request you would make is to extend the subdivision permit to July of '24?
Yes.
Any comments from the board on that?
99% completed now.
Does anybody want to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the subdivision permit for the Gill Farm Estates be extended till July 2024, as requested.
You have a second on that?
Second.
Motion's made and second, any other further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, now, I know John said that he was still waiting for an ASBilt, but.
We're pretty, I talked to John Masick today, he's close, he's going to get some things down and he's going to.
Yeah, but let me just, let me just back up a minute because John Furman requested that himself, looking for it, but he hasn't been on the board in a while, but on the same token, I remember that prior to a street acceptance, that is one of the criteria that has to be submitted before the street's accepted. So you've got some time on that. I mean, John was looking for it, I think, post haste, but on the same token, I don't think it's that pressing, the ASBilt, because when you come in for street acceptance, you've got a laundry list of legal documents.
Legal documents that have to be.
As well as the ASBilt that has to be provided before that's sent to town meeting.
But I want to get the, I want to get the ASBilt done, you know, first, more or less, then I'll go through the legal documents that have to be provided.
All right, so you're looking for Lot Number 3 and.
Release, and we still have three other lots there on top of it.
I was looking over the notes in the folder here. The last time you were here was sometime in March of '22.
Yeah, all right, time flies.
When you requested the release of lots 4, 7, 8, and 9, so you're looking for 3, and that leaves you with, let's see, 2, 4, 5. You still have 4 left after that, right?
Well, yeah, it's technically, there's eight lots in the Gill Farm Road thing. We did sell 34 Pequot Road, which was part of the subdivision.
Oh, so there wasn't nine in the subdivision itself?
There's nine, but one was on Pequot Road.
Lot 1 is usually, this is 34 Pequot Road.
That was the farmhouse that was renovated.
Lot 2, Lot 3.
Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 5, and Lot 6.
Lot 4 is where the house is, right behind that building.
Then Lot 5 and 6 are the two big at the end of the cul-de, at the end of the.
So you're saying Lot 2 is the one that's on Pequot?
No, Lot 1.
Lot 1 is Pequot, Lot 2 is, oh, it's a lot, Lot 3 is.
Lot 3 is the one we're looking for the release on right now, but.
Leaves after we give you Number 3, then there's still 3 left.
Correct, yeah.
And then according to what John recommends and what is typically the board has done over time, that no further lots will be released until some of those other items we mentioned are complete.
Okay, yeah.
Unless there's some extenuating circumstances, you want to release a lot and then say why some of this work hadn't been completed on those remaining items.
Yeah, right.
All right, so do I have a, any other discussion from the board or questions?
Just to reiterate what was, what was being discussed, we're looking to have a motion to release Lot.
Lot 3.
3. And in terms of, we've extended the.
Subdivision.
To expire next year, which was already voted on. The one question I have is, when do you feel that this is going to be substantially complete?
When we're going to be completed?
Substantially complete, yes.
Now, to be honest with you, I'd like to do it for November, talking to the partners, two of the partners that were here tonight. We'd like to complete it by November. I don't think it's a big list. I know John Furman was pleased with what's done. I've got a list of things to do, but I can, I can take care of those.
Well, let's put it this way, you're asking for the extension to next July, but if you complete it before then, and you then want street acceptance, then you can certainly do that, and if your paperwork is involved and all these laundry lists of things are done, you could typically go to town meeting in May to request street acceptance.
But we could, yeah.
Even though all the lots are.
I know we might be a little aggressive trying to get it done by November.
Doesn't mean you, you have to go to July '24 to complete, but you have that deadline, too.
I understand that, yes.
So, sorry, can you just repeat again what needs, what's outstanding in terms of the work?
What's outstanding? What's up, what's outstanding?
Here you go.
Outstanding the.
If you can read it. This is what John sent along.
Yeah. The sediment marker we talked about. Sediment mark post. My contractor thinks that, again, I'll look at the plan on that. I don't think it has to be in concrete, you know.
Well, it's what the detail that was approved in the plans call for.
Have him, have him pull up the plans and see what they.
Yeah, right, okay, we can, we can do that.
Because isn't it supposed to be more of a permanent, that marker?
Masick and Levecq will know that. I'll quiz them about that tomorrow. Then the cleaning, the catch basins, you know, that's, that's a minor fix. I talked to Randy Wilson about that. The painted stop bar at the end of the street, that's a small matter, and the swale, the overflow swale has been installed. So in terms of items, there really isn't a lot. We can figure out what type of stake is to be utilized, and then we can get those other items. There's really not a lot to be done, but I'll work, we want to work with the town.
Is that, is painting that line from stop sign you're saying, is that something the town could do?
Well, they can, you know, they want.
Well, it's not being paid by the town, that's, that's something that's on you.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, yeah.
The town has no interest in doing that.
Right, yeah.
Do you need any more information then?
No, I think, I think we're okay. I just, I just wanted a.
Just a minor, the stake isn't the biggest.
No, John, when he sent that, and I forwards that to everybody, but on the same token, he, he did say that it's come a long way from 60 days ago or even 45 days ago. 90 days ago was looking pretty bleak, but a lot has been accomplished since then, so.
The lot corners and the roadway monuments are installed, you know, and I talked to John Masick today, and he said he's 99% complete on the ASBilt, to be honest with you, but we just got to tie up these matters that Mr. Furman mentioned, and then we'll get it done.
Do I have a motion then to release Lot 3 of Gill Farm Estates?
I will make a motion to release Lot Number 3 of Gill Farm Estates.
Second.
Motion's made and second, and any other further discussion? All in favor?
Paul, aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll send that off to you, and it's going to be notarized and stamped by the town clerk, so I'll send you that off.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Did you folks have anything that you wanted to add or no?
Do you have anything to say?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We're not pronouncing man in life.
Okay, let's see here.
Thank you.
Good night. In between meetings, when I was away, good night, Mark Darnold signed up on a building permit for Paul Trueheart at 78 Glendale Road. It's one of the, it's the last, if you're familiar with it, it's the last house, last lot there that is being constructed. It's been sitting there for a number of years, but he's finally going to build on it, small house. It was well under the stormwater, so I was away on vacation, but I asked Mark to sign off on that so it would expedite it.
Well, that's the lot that has all that buildup or that.
It had a bunch of.
Built, yeah, 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 yeah. I try by the whole time, yeah.
So just to make this official, could I have a motion to accept that building permit?
I'll make, go ahead, if you'd like.
You go, Dan.
We're on a, we're on a pattern going here.
Three for three over here.
Just because I started typing.
I'm not going to stop you.
I'll make a motion to approve the 78 Glendale Road building permit for Mr. Trueheart.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This came in after I had typed out the agenda, but it's pretty straightforward. I'll send out a copy to you guys. William Gielacher, who is a representative from O'Connor Land and Timber Company, is seeking to take out a chapter 61, 3.6 acres. And if you recall, for those that were.
3.6, that's what he said, yes.
If you recall, Dan, and I don't know if you were here, Paul, but we had approved an A and R for that not too long ago, for that same parcel. So now he's asking to remove it from 61 and per town regs. We have to waive our right of first refusal and send it along to select board to do the same if they wish, but I have, I don't think we have any interest in preserving that land and taking it out of a chapter, so I'll look for a motion to waive our right of first refusal on that parcel.
I'll make a motion, the planning board waive its right of refusal on MAP 34, Parcel 148.
And it's owned by O'Connor Land and Timber.
Owned by O'Connor Land and Timber, got it.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion's made and second, all in favor?
Aye.
I will inform the select board of that. Next, Richard Harris, being another fiscal year, has submitted his contract, and it's really no different from last year, based on $75 an hour plus travel and expenses.
Can I see, is there an upset limit on that or is there a?
That's the contract here. Just have to fill in. It's asking for not to exceed, I think in previous years, we put on it not to exceed, like Larry Smith had, not to exceed $10,000, but I don't, I think that's kind of high. I'd rather not exceed $5,000, but I, most of the work that we have coming up, there's some more work to do on zoning, but I was informed by the town administrator that our ARPA funds go until December of 25.
25.
25, something like that. So there's money left there if we ever want to do any more zoning work. Most of his work, like peer reviews and consulting on subdivisions or like the common driveway that's coming up, that's all paid by the applicant. So his, his fees to the board essentially are for any other consulting we need outside of what's not paid for by applications. So we could put a cap on it, I suppose.
Can we, do you recall last year's figure? What was that, you said it was? What was our figure last year?
For.
For our upset limit?
It was, it used to be $10,000. I think that's kind of high.
Yeah.
I would put a cap of 5 on it.
What's our available funding?
Right now, of all our true accounts, no, no, I can't count the peer review because that's separate. I'm going to guess it's probably nine or 10 grand from our rest of our services, not including ARPA because that's designated work that we can't charge anything else.
I suggest his services are very essential to our boards.
You have to remember, and this is the way I'm looking at it, with the work that was done alone on zoning prior to getting ARPA funds, I mean, most of his work for us was done editing zoning and getting that to town meeting. So now, it's just a case of an email here, a phone call here, maybe come to a meeting. That's why I really don't think that we need to spend more than $5,000 because the bulk of his work is done with the zoning and what's left. Hopefully we take care of whatever we can find, then we can address that after those funds run out, but.
So this expires June 30 at $5,000, at his rate of $75 an hour, it's about 66 hours of work, which I think is more than enough, so I suggest.
That's what I mean, especially when, when the applicants are paying for the consulting and his, his time put into that and decision writing, that, we don't have to pay that, but the applicants are paying that.
I don't need, I need concerns about that, yeah.
I would, I would think $5,000 would be enough.
Yeah.
And another thing, he has not a conflict of interest, he has a conflict time-wise. He was approached, he didn't say the municipality or the town, which won't really affect us, but.
Is it Southampton?
He, he was asked to consult in some municipality that is either looking for a planner or something else. The meetings conflict with ours, first and third. So I said, well, for instance, if we had this hearing, our first meeting in September for this common driveway, he would not be able to make it. So the 30th is going to work for him. So he's asking me, he said, is there any way that you can reschedule some of your meetings to either the 2nd and 4th? I really don't want to interrupt our schedule because not only that, it conflicts with somebody else that's in this room on some of those alternate Wednesdays, but I would only do it if it was a project that came up that we needed, and I would only reschedule a meeting for that because otherwise, he could, I could send him something and he could send his comments, and it would be up to us to wing it from there, you know?
In terms of our future schedule, can we punt that until another time in terms of addressing what that need is, what his availability is? Given that there's three of us here, and just hearing out what the other board members would think would be best for us collectively.
Okay, I can put that on. So right now, we're covered because he'll be able to come for the common driveway, which is really the only thing we've got on the docket right now.
Be a good time to talk about that.
So anyway, just to finish up the contract end of it, do I have a motion then that we will ask for his services not to exceed $5,000 of board services, not including anything to do with zoning and the ARPA funds?
To be, to expire June 30 of.
2024.
2024, so this, we're only talking about the next 10 months or so.
Right.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve for $5,000 until fiscal year 2024, June 30 of, of June 2024, as, for the contract that's been submitted to us at a rate of $75 an hour. Second.
Were his motions made and seconded? For the contract not to exceed $5,000, expiring next June 30, 2024. For the contract not to exceed $5,000, expiring next June 30, 2024. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, just an update. I know Paul was a member. Were you a member of the board, Dan, when we were dealing with 32 High Street?
Oh, you were on conservation.
I have some bowls of them for-
All right, so you're real aware of that.
Yes.
So, I had asked Randall, but in between asking him and getting a response, Bucky Sparkle, if you remember, was the engineer for that.
Indeed, yes, I remember Bucky.
Remember, he's engineer. So, he sent a nice letter. I guess he's been on top of things, but anyway, he sent a three-page letter. I think I forwarded it to you people, but in between times, I had asked Randall, with all the rain we've had, and heavy rain this year, I said, did you have any complaints on that property from the guy across the street, especially that was worried? And here's Randall's response. "We had one day that unconsolidated materials blocked the culvert below 32 High on July 16th and directed the torrent into and across the roadway. This was a ridiculous amount of rain, and when I visited the site with Conscom a couple of days later, I did not find evidence to support that the mess could be attributed all to Felton. There was minor erosion observed, but anywhere, not anywhere near the amount of the volume which made it down to High Street. He also increased the size of the riprap aggregate and boulders he was utilizing in those areas when he repaired them, so I am satisfied with his response to this incident. I had been pleasantly surprised at the effectiveness of the measures employed to arrest the gravel discharge from his driveway onto High Street. None were observed throughout the numerous heavy rain events." So, Randall's satisfied that, whatever, but Bucky had said, what was, what was left here? I don't know, it's quite, it's quite in detail. Remaining, okay. Remaining work punch list. Retention basin ground cover. Seed mix specified under buffer zone should be reapplied. Small portion of embankment between the basin and the road is eroding. Erosion control blankets should be installed on slopes. So, this would make sense to you, but it's quite a, quite a laundry list of things that Bucky says they could still do, but my main concern was to see if there was any avalanche coming off of that site like the neighbor was hoping to avoid. So, that shows that a lot of the work done up there, because if there was anything going to show, it was going to be this year.
I think that what Bucky identified is the responsibility in order to meet, looking at these items, and this is, he's the engineer of record, so these are items that need to be addressed in order to fulfill the site plan intention. The one thing that I do have a question about, and maybe this is going back to Randall, I drove by there several times in the last few weeks, and on the south, excuse me, on the, on the north side of the property, as it abuts the northern parcel, the town's swale that is on the side of the road, as it abuts Felton's property and the property to the north, there's a massive mound, not massive, but let's say four feet high approximately, of, of small stone and material. Who put that there?
Probably his contractor.
It's town property.
That's town property?
Yeah, like in a swale adjacent to the edge of pavement, as it abuts both parcels, as, excuse me, as it, as it abuts the northernmost parcel to Felton. What's that all about?
You want to maybe-
How would Felton react?
Maybe send him an email and ask him if he's-
I will, yeah. Because that was a little, I don't know if that was Randall's response to what happened then due to the storms in the last few weeks, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's Felton's, because it looks like it was deliberate.
I think the town put it there?
It looks like someone put it there. I'll ask it.
Interesting. All I got left is a couple of warrants here. I've got a bill from VHB for Gill Farm Estates. John has been very religious about checking on that. $510, which comes out of the peer review fund that was prepaid by Gill Farm. So, $510 to VHB. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoice for $510 to VHB.
Second.
Motion made and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second warrant, I've got one is for Richard Harris, for consulting on the Parsons Village preliminary plan for 44936, which will be paid by the applicants there. And then the Daily Hampshire Gazette for 41710 for a public hearing notice, which was for the common driveway tonight, actually, and that was prepaid by the applicant.
Paul, can you fresh remember what the village is?
Across from Comby's.
Okay, yes, 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 yes.
It's still, it's still a work in progress, but that was, remember when they came to-
Yes, 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 yes.
Subdivision Road?
Yes.
And there was a, a town department's meeting prior to that-
Right.
With that Richard attended. They were trying to discuss options. So, when I, so 449 for Richard Harris and 41710 for the Daily Hampshire Gazette, the total is 86646.
I'd like to make motions to, to approve the two invoices totaling 866.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
I'll second that. Motion made and second. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have nothing else, unless people have committee reports of any sort.
Nothing to report.
Dan?
Nothing to report.
Aye.
Other than that, I guess then we'll see you on the 30th, if you would put it on your calendars.
It's in there already.
Where the hell did I put that? Okay, I guess that's it. So, thanks, guys, thank you for coming. Sorry we couldn't hear you there, but we will eventually. Oh, I got a notice today from Lucy Dalton that the Attorney General's office is very close to approving the warrants at town meeting. However, they needed, I knew this wasn't going to go off without some hitch, they needed the tear sheets from the legal ad in the Gazette, which I had in my email, and I forwarded them to her, but she did not submit it with the packet, but they want to verify that it was legally published. So, it looks like that's getting closer to being, being history. Other than that, do I have a motion to approve, to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.